Everyone, thank you for being here, for those of you in person, for those live streaming, and for those of you joining us from the island of Catalina. I will ask our legal counsel to take a roll call and establish a quorum.
Sure. Member Lopez?
Present.
Member Otto?
Here.
President Craighead?
Here.
Member Benitez?
Here.
And Member Miller?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez, will you lead us in the pledge?
Stand. The board has been meeting in closed session today regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The board took reportable action on the following items. On item 3.1, the board voted 5-0 to approve the readmission of student numbers 201169333, 201221616, and the board voted 4-0 with one abstention, with Member Lopez abstaining, to readmit student number 201145191. On item 3.2, the board voted 5-0 to approve several public employee appointments, and now I will ask Mr. Moskowitz to provide more information.
Thank you, President Craighead. Yes, it's my honor to read out these names on behalf of our team. So first we have Christina Cortez. She was a program coordinator in CDC and RAP. She will now be a program specialist in early learning, primarily working in the ESTK8 office. We have Briande Strader, program facilitator at Barton, now program specialist in our expanded learning opportunities program. At the secondary level, we have Ceyapa Velalvir. She was a counselor at Nelson, now will be head counselor at Avalon K-12. And Jacob Gonzalez, was teacher at Stevens Middle School, will now be activity specialist at Cabrillo. And so they're probably off on vacation right now and enjoying their summer, but they do know about this. We were able to reach out to them. So we're excited that we're able to provide this promotional opportunity for them and excited for them to join us when they come back in August.
Thank you, and congratulations to those aforementioned people, and hopefully they're enjoying their summer vacations, as it were. And there is no further reportable action to report. So next, I want to just mention that you may have noticed that the agenda looks different this time around, and that's because we're using a new system, and so it organizes our agendas differently, and we are all trying to acclimate to this new system. So if I stumble, or if we don't, you know, if we make a mistake along the way, please know that we're learning our way through it. So, let's see. That being said, we will go to adoption of the agenda as posted.
Move for approval?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. Next on the agenda, we have recognitions and acknowledgements. However, we have no video this evening. Our multimedia team is taking a little pause, and they're going to recalibrate, and we will look forward to the presentations going forward. So item number 10, we're at public testimony on items listed on the agenda.
We have no public speakers tonight for items listed on the agenda.
And item 11, public testimony on items not listed on the agenda.
We have one speaker, Gloria Perlis Lido.
Lido, and I'm the manager of outreach and engagement with the ScholarShare Investment Board, which is an independent state agency under California State Treasurer Fiona Ma's office. Tonight, I'm going to just share what our mission is and just about our programs, but I want to highlight one of our programs called CalKids. The board's primary mission is to oversee two programs: ScholarShare 529, which is California Self-Affiliated Colleges Savings Program; a tax-advantaged college investment plan. Any earnings are tax-deferred money and can be withdrawn without any tax or penalties on the earnings if it is withdrawn for qualified education expenses. But I'm talking tonight to highlight CalKids, which was launched in 2022 with Governor Gavin Newsom, and is the nation's largest children's savings account program. The purpose is to create a program that provides greater access to higher education to as many students as possible, and to help parents, guardians build assets and have a strong starting point towards their child's career development and educational future. So there's two eligible groups: newborns, born-on after July 1, 2022, and it's up to $175 in free scholarship money, but I wanted to highlight low-income public school students. So eligible for our low-income public school students are identified for the Local Control Funding Formula, which I'm sure you're familiar with; students that are probably on free and reduced lunch programs; alternative income that receive benefits through programs like CalFresh, CalWorks; and identified as migratory foster youth or homeless. So there's two main students. The first year when it was established, the 2021 to 22 school year, they're first through 12th graders. They were eligible in the second year, and years moving forward, they're eligible first grade students. So the award money is up to $1,500. That was invested by the state, and at least $500 in initial seed money. If the student is identified as foster youth or homeless, it's another $500. So it's up to $1,500 in money towards colleges and universities in and out of state, career and vocational training programs. So it's an easy process. All the students need is their statewide student ID number, their date of birth, and the name of the county where the student was enrolled on fall academic census date in October, and these scholarships are already established in the students' names, and there's no application process. So what I'm asking of the board is to help with the promotion and marketing of this program, and to just give you a sense of that initial school year. There's total enrollment accounts are 39,251 students, and 4,529 have been claimed. So that's just an indication of how much money is out there that could benefit your students towards higher education, because if they don't claim it and use it by age 26, they're going to lose out on this opportunity. So I wanted to partner with the school district and see in what ways we can strategize and get this information out. So, thank you.
Thank you. I noticed staff taking notes, so, and I'm seeing heads nodding. So I believe somebody will be getting back to you on that.
Great.
But thank you for bringing that opportunity forward.
Thank you, Madam President.
And Mr. Riel, we had only one speaker?
I'm sorry, that's the final speaker.
Okay.
President Craighead?
Yes.
If I may, I don't know if we were planning on, you made reference to formatting changes on our agenda. Might this also be a good time for us to make our committee members aware that our board documents and agendas are not on board docs anymore? I know that we spoke briefly this morning on the subject. I can share more in my board report, but in case folks are wondering where the agendas are, they're not in the same place anymore. So hopefully, we have the opportunity to share more about that.
Thank you for that reminder. I had intended to include that and did not. So thank you for that. Yes.
So it's on the website through a direct link. It'll take you right to where the new board agenda and supporting documentation is at.
Yeah, might take a little bit of exploring. Okay. And that brings us to reports on superintendent advisory groups. Item 12.1, business budget and policy development, Dr. Benitez.
Nothing to report on today, manager.
Thank you. Item 12.2, instruction and student learning supports, Ms. Lopez.
Yes, thank you. The contracts going before the board for review contain master agreements for the various non-public agencies and non-public schools. We used to provide services to students with disabilities when district programs and/or resources cannot meet a student's needs. They include speech and language pathology services, nursing support, educationally-related mental services, instructional aids for those with disabilities, behavior intervention aids and behavior technicians, as well as non-public schools. And tonight, you'll notice that these are contract renewals, which are necessary to continue special education-related services for students with disabilities. And these contracts are renewed annually, as stated, in California Ed Code 56366, in order to continue services as specified in students' IEPs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have item 12.3, workforce development, Mr. Miller.
I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. And next, we have item 13, and I'm just going to mention that because of the way things printed out, we will be voting on items 13.1 to 13.8, and it covers a couple of different pages, so it might not be easy to follow along. But I just want to reiterate that this is including items 13.1 to 13.8, and it does go over to the next page. So we need a motion.
Moves to approve.
Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions on items under 13 point. Let's see here. I'm going to go out of order, pardon me, Madam Chair, but why don't we start with, if we could get some background, Dr. Baker, on the item 13.7, approval of the grant application for Learning Communities for School Success program? And my more specific question is, I think this is great, right, that we're going after this grant there. In the memo that we received, there was a reference to potentially leveraging Prop 28 programming, or am I off on that, Mr. Moskowitz?
Yes. Member Benitez, it's not Prop 28. It's funds from a different funding source through the state.
Yeah, so in that memo...
In kind.
Yeah.
You're speaking to.
Yes.
So this is asking you to approve a grant application that we have no idea whether the school will receive.
Right.
It's part of a bigger program. It does, it does reference not additional services, but things that the school already receives...
Got it.
...that they have to use as matching funds.
Got it.
So in that case, Prop 28 funds are the existing funds that would be matching up to this arts-funded intervention program, just to kind of simplify it. I think I...
That's great.
I was hearing the question, so.
That's great, thank you. And I'm sorry that I didn't articulate that correctly.
No, no, that's okay.
Because we also have a report for Prop 28, a use of funds, right? Yeah, yeah, thank you. The second question or background was around our, this is under 13.5, sub number three, approve LBUC Spring 2025 Local School Wellness Policy, the triennial assessment. I know, again, we have several documents. If you could just provide big picture of what this is, I know we do it every three years, and sort of what it provides, the parameters as to how this sort of looks like at our schools, to our wellness centers, and all the other things sort of mentioned, right? So there's a policy here that ensures that we do X, Y, and Z. If you could just elaborate on that.
Well, I'm just going to say, first of all, how excited I am that Dr. Myers-Miller is here in her first board meeting tonight. And she's not going to like me saying this, but it's also her birthday.
Oh.
So it's kind of interesting. The first questions you gave, Dr. Benitez, are all for her to answer.
Happy birthday, Dr.!
So in honor of her birthday, please answer that question.
Look at that. It almost was like a perfect setup for me, right?
The perfect storm, as they would say, right? Right. So I'm hoping that I am able to clarify any of the questions that you have. First, you want to have some clarification on the policy, and then also the services for the specific... Okay. All right. So this particular policy, the local school wellness policy, is actually a triannual report. So this is after three years of goals that were established from a council of individuals, both from the community and also within the school district, to establish goals that we wanted to engage in related to the expectation. So this is a policy that is then used across our system for that. The actual report, then, just as we did earlier today, kind of disaggregates how well we did according to that, to the goals that we established. And so one of the things that we found through the analysis was that we were able to establish wellness centers, as you know. We were able to provide services for social, emotional learning, and we also found that there were some inconsistencies in some of the practices that we were engaging in across our system. So that is one of the goals that is established for the 25 to 28 school year. So it was the first iteration of the goals that we established. We looked at how well we did according to that, and then we established goals. Please note that the engagement for the analysis was through all stakeholders, both teachers, students, and community members, both at the middle school for student, middle and high school for the student-level engagement, and then for parents and staff members. There were additional surveys that were completed. So it was about over 1,900 different engagement pieces that were able to inform the analysis for the report.
And thank you for providing the supporting documentation, the results from the surveys, because then we get a sense of what the feedback and input is from these sessions. Appreciate it. That's the blowing out of the candles part right there for the...
Thank you. On that, on that note, the Wellness Council is comprised of education partner groups, parents, students, teachers, health professionals, and according to the document, the Board of Education, or members of the Board of Education. And President Craighead has served since 2022, so we see the committees in 2022 and then 2023, and so, and up until now, we have President Craighead as part of it. And I'm just wondering what, since the assessment states that representatives include board members, what can we do or how do we sign up if we were interested in joining that committee as well? So that's my first question. And then, and then my other question there is that the survey found that there is a need to ensure equitable implementation of wellness services across schools and increase access to counselors, nurses, and wellness staff. And do, are we working on a plan to address this? So that, that is my second question on that, on the wellness assessment report.
I'll start with a second question, Member Lopez. As it relates to supporting the areas of next steps, specifically for implementation of services, one of the, one of the ways in which we will be working is for the professional development with all of the wellness center, social workers, and all the staff associated, so that we are all on the same page and providing ongoing progress opportunities for them to be receiving services.
And I can address the first part. If there's another board member that would like to serve on this committee, I would suggest reaching out to Esther Depp. She's the facilitator for this particular committee, and I believe she would welcome more participation from stakeholders. I've enjoyed serving on this committee because there are students that serve on the committee, and the students are always given priority to participate, priority to speak. We are able to listen to our students in a way that really upholds their value in the district, and it's, it's one of my favorite committees to serve on, because we really get a lot of work done in a very concise amount of time, the way these meetings are facilitated. One of the wonderful things that has resulted from this work is a resource for our students as far as, you know, counseling, well, there's a, there's a long list. I believe it's online also, but anything having to do with mental health or physical health, for that matter, hotlines, community organizations, it's a, it's a real hub of information. But yeah, my recommendation is reach out to Esther Depp, and yeah, if you need help with that, I can help you.
And if I could add, you might remember, a few months ago, you approved a grant that we received for Children and Youth Behavioral Health Initiative, and so that is our attempt to increase services that we're providing in our schools, and that's working with our existing counselors, psychologists, social workers, and expanding that, as well as working with community mental health agencies to expand the services that we can provide. I have, oh. Oh, I know, I was just going to have other questions on, go ahead.
So I do want to highlight, thank you for the mapping out the next steps to, so one of them is sort of consistency of services, right, in an equitable manner. I also read in that report that another one was staff just not knowing about the resources available, so it's sort of information, right? So thank you for the report.
On, on item 13.1 on the board minutes, we're once again approving the minutes to a meeting that took place more than two months ago, and I'm just wondering if we can get all of those, all of the minutes to date, including tonight's, at the next board meeting, so that we can catch up. We're, we're two months behind, and I think it's easier to forget or to have to go back to meetings to like make sure that the, the minutes are, are accurate. In the, in the minutes that are for approval, there was a speaker that was here that night speaking on the school of choice, and she was left out. And then also, I, I motioned to extend public comment, and I noticed that that was included, including the Mr. Miller who seconded, but it was included on 17.3, 0.4, 17.5, 17.6, 17.7, 17.8, those who had motioned and seconded those minutes. So just wondering if that can be changed before we, we approved, approve those minutes?
Can I ask a question in relation to...
Yes.
Mr. Riel, I'm wondering if we could bring forward just the idea of what is captured in the minutes, because I think with some of the questions that you're raising, it might be helpful if we had a clear and consistent understanding of what we are seeking to do in capturing the minutes. My understanding is that there not to be a transcription of what happens, but there to capture broad ideas, but I wonder if some understandings that we could all agree upon might be helpful to have going forward.
Yeah.
I think it's been a little while since we've talked about minutes in any way, so I don't know if...
Yeah, and I think I don't expect, I mean, they could be ludicrous for me to expect, or anyone to expect, that everything is placed in minutes, but in the past, the minutes would have a little something, for example, on the public, the public comment. You know, they spoke, and there was a sentence. Now it only says, spoke about, I don't know, school of choice, or spoke about immigration policy, right? And I think that providing additional detail could ensure a more complete, transparent record. And I just, I just want to make sure that we are consistent if we are putting, for example, in the minutes, if we are saying who's, who's motioning something and seconding it, let's just put it on the minutes, or let's just not, right? So just to be consistent.
So part of the, the primary purpose for the minutes is to document the board's actions that are taken. And so the, those action items that come before the board is typically when we would identify when there's a motion, who made it, who seconded it, and then actually official action. I think the context that you were talking about extending the timeframe, that's really suspension of your bylaw. So you're not actually, I mean, you're, you're suspending your bylaws, so technically, you're moving on that, but it's not an action item for approval on, on the posted agenda. That's likely why that particular one didn't get hit into the minutes. But to, to the point, it is the purpose of the minutes to really document the actual actions taken. And sometimes it is difficult, I agree with consistency. As you know, we're transitioning in our, in the superintendent's office related to the board secretary, and so we're working through the backlog on those minutes, and right now, we're still working on that process, and that's really where the minutes stand, but we certainly are putting that as a priority to try to... As it relates to a transcription, or at least identifying the topics that the speaker spoke, that the public speaker spoke to, that's so that we don't, we don't include any other summary, so that it's not our summary of what it is that they're saying. We're identifying the topic that they spoke on, and then we do have the, obviously, the video that's posted online as to the actual speaking of that. And so that's part of the purpose, so we're not interpreting what the speaker spoke.
So should the minutes include every individual who spoke, provide a public comment or not? Or is it...
They typically should include those that spoke at that night, and you're indicating that there was a...
That you left one out, yes.
Somebody was left out, which is probably unusual. I have to go back and look at it. I mean, we can cross-reference it with your notes.
Yeah.
We actually have a running, a running list as to those people that sign up, signed in to speak, so we can cross-reference it for that date to see if we missed something.
Okay, perfect. On item 13.5 on something else, Proposition 28, art and music in schools funding in the annual report. My question is, how much money was received last year, and how much do we expect to receive this coming year? We did have 58 full-time certificated teachers and seven full-time classified staff, for a total of 65 full-time individuals for 44,687 students. So it looks like there's roughly about 687 students per individual, but I'm just wondering what, what the district received last year, and again, what we anticipate receiving next year.
Member Lopez, you did bring that up in our superintendent's advisory committee, and I was unable to get the specific total amounts for you for '24, '25, for this particular school year, and what we are expecting to receive for this school year, but it is based on attendance numbers. I will be able to provide that to you at a later time.
No, is that even a rough, like, ballpark?
For '25, '26, we have 13 million in the budget for '25, '26.
Any further discussion? And in that case, I will ask Mr. Riel to take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto? President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
And Member Miller?
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
Thank you. Next, we have item number 14, staff report, and we have no staff report this evening. So under new business, we have item 15.1, acceptance of monitoring reports.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
I do have, so I do have a question. We, we're not on track to meet our goals, and, but given that the next steps include approaches that have been in place for, for years, so a couple of things, are we open to alternative options? And then, do we have the data? Because we did receive the data, but together, looking at all of the students in, in the district, but do we have it broken down by demographics? And if that's something that we can, we can receive, so that we can see who is doing better, who's not, which schools are maybe doing things that are helping improve student achievement? Is that possible?
So that isn't part of the progress monitoring report. You will receive an end-of-year report related to my evaluation that is coming to you by next board meeting, that will give, may answer some of the questions that you're asking, and disaggregated data that's separate from the progress monitoring would need to be a request that we, that the board entertains. that we, that the board entertains. We do have a number of ways that we report that will not cause additional work for staff, which is disaggregated. And so it's something that I can include in a board, a board update that gives you information, not specific to the, the board goals, though. We don't have a report that's specific to the board goals, that's disaggregated, if that's what you're asking. We do have other data points that we are monitoring because, because schools are responsible in addition to the board goals. For compliance reason, they are responsible for progress with their English learners, with their students with disabilities. And so at the school level, that is something that we are monitoring.
So, so I am asking for the disaggregated data on our progress on the goals. So I guess I am not publicly requesting that, that data, that I think now with the new board bylaws, we have to also, has to be agreed upon. But yes, that's what I, I'm asking, because I think it's important to see who's, who's making those, those gains and who we need to provide additional supports to.
The, the monitoring report that we're talking about tonight addresses interim goal one A.
One B and two B.
It's cut off on my page.
Yes.
Do you have questions on those items? Because that would be helpful if we're.
Yes. So, so we did see that we are off track, right, in terms of meeting our goals. So I like to see who is, you know, broken down by demographics. If there's any one group that would potentially be meeting those goals? Or, or, you know, are we all across the different demographics just not do well? I do see that we are just taking all of our student data and putting it together. But I like it broken down. I mean, I'd also like gender. See if, you know, if there's any one group of students that is, that is doing better than another.
So in terms of the interim goals, did you want to address a particular interim goal or just? Goal one A and interim goal one B? And as far as being off track, do you want to?
I think what I'm just asking is really for the data. That's it. It just broken down my demographics. That's, that's it. And how our, our kids performed.
Yeah, I'm not sure how we proceed with this, because the, the interim goals are very specific. And they support the goals that are very specific. And I'm not sure that those numbers speak to the goals themselves.
So you want me to break it down, like ask for language arts? So that, that's something that I would be requesting, like let me, let's see how, so the, the goal that's linked to, to reading, students reading by third grade at the, at, at grade level in third grade. So if we look at, at the language arts test results for, let's say, our third graders broken down by demographics, that would be helpful. And that's what I'm, what I'm asking for. Maybe I need to be a little bit more specific. But I can also send you an email and send superintendent an email to, to, to make that request.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out where your request fits with the interim goals that we're looking at tonight? And, and how we can address that with these interim goals?
Yeah, I think, I think related to the training session that we were doing this morning, I think it falls within information request. And part of what I'm also just listening for is for board update that you all receive collectively. If there are reports that we're already, already creating that could be attached to a board update, as well as my end-of-year currently, my, as we talked about this morning, my evaluation has other elements in it around student progress. Perhaps that may answer some of the questions. So it may not be for tonight. But there is an opportunity for an information request as part of, we think about effective monitoring. What is really important when we think about monitoring reports is, as focused as you all stay on the monitoring report, is intended to create a system of focus. And so I can, with Board Member Lopez, or any of you in one-on-ones, I can also take the information requests and see how available data can come to, to all of you collectively, if it's, if it's requested by one. But also our research office, part of the focus and creating the monitoring reports is for them to be able to focus. And so the reason why there's an information request in effective monitoring is so that it doesn't cause significant staff time to run other data reports. So that's why I'm asking, when I think about the end-of-year report, perhaps that will answer some of the questions. If we have other existing methods of data that could be shared with the board, we will do so. But right now, there's not something to supplement this that is, that the research office has produced to support disaggregated, because they're focused on the board as the, the board goal, as it has been written, and the interims, as they had been written. But I don't know if there's an answer tonight, but I can, but it's something that we can continue to stay in dialogue about what other forms of data the board has access to.
So Member Lopez, it sounds like we're going to be able to receive that information, but in a different format. Maybe not in our, in our public meeting, but as it results, I mean, as it, in, in regards to the superintendent evaluation, when, when we receive all those materials or in a, in a board update, in one of our board updates, then the superintendent will provide that information. So it, it sounds like that information doesn't actually pertain to the interim goals that we're looking at tonight, but that we will expect to have that information in either a board update or in the materials that we receive when we're given the information for the superintendent evaluation. Do I have that?
Yeah, that's correct. And I, and I was prepared and hoping to actually, we all did a run-through this morning in workshop. Our team behind the scenes is prepared to call up the monitoring reports and actually go back to the four components of an effective monitoring report and share them publicly. It's a reminder for all of us, but to name the four components of the monitoring reports. Mr. Moskowitz is prepared also to, to share specifically about the analysis, the what's working, what needs more attention, and how we're deriving that from our team's work in preparation for each of the monitoring reports, with a, with a, with a reminder that we're all learning. And so this being the first set that we're asking you to, to vote on acceptance of, but we want to provide some back, some background to the report itself.
And we did have an agenda item this morning on effective goal monitoring. And as we talked about this morning, it's a learning process. We're, you know, we're all on this journey together. So with, you know, with that question about having disaggregated information and stuff, it's all part of us trying to figure out, okay, where do we, you know, where does that fit in? Does that fit in with this goal monitoring? Is that a, you know, a different item? Hopefully, we're, we're addressing, you know, every bit of it, the, the interim goals and then the, you know, the need to have other information. So hopefully, that's helpful. But I noticed, Dr. Benitez, you're.
Yeah, I just want to be clear on, on what we're voting to accept tonight. So notwithstanding additional requests that we may have for additional data or disaggregated data, my understanding of the, of the process of accepting the, the report is that we look for, to make sure that, one, there's a reference to the specific interim goal that's being presented to us, right? Two, that we actually have the data specific to that goal. And again, that's not to say we can't ask for other data, make other requests. But for this interim goal, I'm talking about interim goal one A, that we have the data. And then as a part of that, what I'm looking for, again, on whether to accept or not, is, does the superintendent have a sense of what the data is telling us? And so I think if I'm looking at these monitoring reports correctly, that's listed under Evaluation of Current Performance. And then the last thing, what's the analysis? What do we do with this? What are next steps? Referencing, from my perspective, and I, I do have questions about this, what strategies we're using, so that in those cases where we're on track or off track in this case, whether we're making progress or not, what are we doing? How do we know that this strategy is giving us what we would hope to see? So my question is more framed around.
So let me pause for a moment, because you can see on the screen that the team has called up the one A report. And side by side, the four components are what you just named. So on the left-hand side of what has been called up onto the screen, you can see the goal, the section for the goal, the data and the interpretation. All of that is a function of our Research and Student Outcomes Office. They are helping us. The goal has been established. They are processing the data in a way that is, as effective monitoring reports are supposed to be at a sixth-grade readability, so they're accessible to everybody. And so on the left-hand side, you see that. On the right-hand side, you see what becomes the analysis or evidence. It is in some of the manuals. It's called root cause analysis. We're also trying to simplify and thinking of someone who is not spending their days in education. They may want to just read it simply. So you'll see analysis, what's working, what needs attention, and next steps, that are the fourth component of that plan.
I did have a question specific to that.
Yeah.
And we touched on it very briefly this morning, but again, we kind of, we're going through, okay, what is this? What are we asking for? Different between a tactical, technical question and a strategic question. So my, my question is, I think, related to ultimately, how do we know that we're going in the right direction that we're going, that we want to go in? And, and if not, then sort of, okay, what, what are our thoughts about it? So for these interim, these three interim goals that were being provided, those four components for each, I, I, I'm, I'm understanding that for some grade levels, in this case, grade levels K through two, we made some progress. But then for other grade levels, three through five, let's say, we're not seeing the progress that we are hoping to see. And that one strategy, as I understand it, is professional development. That may or may, you know, may, may be the key strategy, or maybe one of three or four or five strategies. So I guess my question is, do we know at this point if professional development is a significant sort of strategy that's having an impact on those things that we are making progress on? Or do we not yet know that? Because in part of our conversation this morning, again, I want to contextualize this, because most of our community probably didn't see the board workshop this morning. My understanding is that some teachers received ELA professional development at some grade levels, others received math professional development. So we, you know, are there relations to who's received what kind of professional development and the goals? Is that, would you say that's a strategic question, Brian, or a tactical question?
And, and is it a question with an opinion?
I've, I've got, I've got about three different streams of thoughts going through my head. So if I could take a step back for a moment, I think it might be helpful. When we, when we're looking at the second page up on the screen, for those who are watching from home, and then you have it as page ninety-seven of one thirty-two, that's page two, or the interim goal one A, Analysis, What's Working, Attention, Next Steps. I think this is important context. So Dr. Baker mentioned the, the page on the left with the goal, the data, and the initial evaluation of that data was, was primarily, the lift was primarily in our Research and Student Outcomes team. They take the goal, they find the data directly aligned to the goal as you've established it, or the interim goal as we've established it. And then they do the, the initial evaluation of that. The information on the right, we're taking a very different approach to monitoring reports. The prior version would have been maybe Dr. Madrigal up here, and we were kind of just a dialogue between board and Dr. Madrigal, and maybe one of us then would jump in with some additional information. What we know, in working with Council of Great City Schools and with our coach, what we know is the, the analysis, the what's working, the attention, next steps, that information really ideally comes from those closest to the work. Coaches, leaders in OCIPD, teachers, principals out in the field, principal supervisors who are regularly out observing instruction alongside principals. It's not just, it's not just us sitting around this table giving you information. So what we've established for the long term is, what we are establishing for the long term are teams, cross-departmental teams of individuals closest to the work, who will be able to sit down, once the data is provided by the Research and Student Outcomes team, they'll be able to sit down and do all of the analysis that, that is part of page two, if you will. So we want the things that are the greatest root causes in that analysis that across our collective knowledge and skill and observation and practice, we want to put those. The next steps, we want them to be the most high-leverage, research-based next steps that across our departments, we think are most likely going to help us attain if we're off track at, at this time. So that is, that is what we're up to right now. We're creating the teams that will be able to work together to do the analysis going forward. This first set of reports on one A, one B, and two B, we just established these interim goals a month ago. We are now, we got the data as of end of June, we've analyzed it. Many of the folks who we will be incorporating into this work going forward are on, on winter, on summer break right now. So what we did was our principal supervisors, who are close to the work, they're in schools regularly, folks from curriculum, instruction, professional development, we did some initial looking at this and brought what we believe is our professional expertise about what are, what's the root cause, why do we believe things, where do we see some things working? What do we think needs more attention? And what do we believe are the next steps that we are going to begin to work on, starting in August and September, that will most likely impact a greater trajectory on student outcomes? So that, that is how we got to this, this step. But going forward, it is going to be the, the collective brilliance within our organization to say, why do we think we're where we're at? What do we think's working and where are we headed? And that, we want to be super precise in that, because we don't want to be just throwing things on the wall. We don't believe we are on this, on these reports either. But we don't want to just be like throwing things on the wall and hoping that they work. We want these to be the things that we believe are highest leverage, that we are investing time, resources, personnel in, that will, that'll help us get to that. So just wanted to set a little bit of that context and how it's developed differently than maybe we would have done things in the past. And having said that, we do have expertise in the room here that can, as we go through each of these three reports, if you have strategic questions, we can lift up the voices of those with whom we work to be able to answer some of it. And then know that going forward, there will be even more precision and expertise. So I don't know if that's helpful to just set some context.
Yeah, also think about the question that you're asking about professional learning and the, perhaps, you didn't, you didn't use the word correlation, but it made me think about correlation. So we know from background research that professional learning is a key lever to changing practice. As Brian shared, there's some precision in here about quality of designated ELD instruction that's very specific, getting reading right training that's more specific. So I don't think we're at a place right now to, to be able to say it's this one training or not. But it is definitely noticing where we are seeing greater improvement and then tailoring or being very specific about the kinds of training, because training itself is too generalized. We want to get as specific as we can relative to the results that we're seeing.
And, and thank you for that, Dr. Baker. So again, not that we have the answer tonight, but I, I want to make sure that I'm interpreting what's in the monitoring report. All right, so in my mind, if we say we're going to do training, I start going through assumptions, right? Does that mean we didn't offer this training before and now this is a strategy that we're using? Or we didn't offer this kind of specific training? Or we offered the training, but not everyone was able to participate in the training? Those, those are the kinds of things that are percolating in my mind, because the assumption that we didn't offer training before, I think that's a false assumption, right? We must have been offering and doing professional development on ongoing basis. That may not have gotten us the results, because we didn't have these specific goals and interim goals, right? So we may have been getting results in other areas, right? So that's where I'm coming from with my question.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that too, because at a philosophical level and, and implementation, the idea of fewer goals, deeper, and then interims that lead to the outcomes that the board has set as, as its goals, that is a very strong way of thinking about system improvement, rather than, you know, dozens of goals that really never penetrate the surface. So you see across the reports, a number of speaking to the analysis and the way that teachers, coaches, teacher-coaches, and principals using the data differently. One of the reasons that we eliminated what we've called district goals and built those into guardrails or interim was because of that. So we're narrowing the focus, going deeper in the areas that the board has established as the highest priority goals. There are other areas that we have to monitor and that we want to monitor, but that is. but that is, that is a result of your board goals and then approving the like the metrics that go with them that now we're using for our interims. Yes, thank you.
So for that first goal, again, Dr. Baker, just want to make sure that I know what I'm voting on tonight, right? If we vote to accept this monitoring report as it stands, with those four components that we're looking for, one of the things that I want to see, and I'm going to point to, just so that we're very specific.
Yeah, great.
Bullet point three in interim goal 1A under evaluation of current performance. This tells me that our superintendent, and I'll read it out loud, right? We have made progress since June twenty twenty-three, but are off track to meet our interim goal, right? That's telling me we're not sugarcoating, we're not misrepresenting.
You can see four, we're four percent off track.
That data that I can see, you're not just acknowledging and affirming, but then what I want to do is then look at that second page that Brian pointed to, say, okay, knowing that we're not on track, that we're off track, what, you know, what are you affirming that we're moving forward on? To get us either on track or to, not expedite, to improve the progress that we are on?
Yes, that is, that is a great way of describing it. I would also say that, and you brought this up earlier, maybe it was mislipses. Like some things are, have, are starting new. Many things over the last couple of years, we had built professional learning experiences. We've had reading training. So it's not going to necessarily show up new, that everything is, well, you see you're four percent off track. So start a new thing, especially in this time, I'll say, fiscally and where we are as a district. So you should see us getting more precise and more specific about the strategies as you see our first attempt in these reports.
All right, so clarification. We are voting to accept the monitoring progress report that we're not, we're not on track. And we're basically saying this is what's working, what's not, and these are our next steps. Is that correct?
So you are, your vote is to accept them, that they meet the standards of an effective monitoring report? Yes, that those four aspects, the goal, the data, the interpretation, the evidence, and the plan, that you see that represented, you're accepting the report related to those four aspects of effective monitoring reports. It doesn't mean that any of us, you're not saying that you're satisfied with off-track. We're not saying we're satisfied with off-track. And I think that speaks to not hiding the data, not sugarcoating the data, not changing the goal, persisting and looking at the action plan and analysis until the next monitoring of these 1A, 1B, and 2B.
Okay, and then I'll request the data that I just requested via email. Thank you.
So do we have any other questions pertaining to the interim goals as far as the four aspects of these, of the monitoring that we should be looking at? Do we have any, any further questions about that?
This morning was helpful.
Yeah, I was going to say you did an hour and a half this morning. So that is helpful. And I'll just, I'll think a couple of things from this morning I think it's important to bring forward. So the public will see, there is a blank page, the very last page of each monitoring report. That is a place where in future versions, many of the tactical and technical questions that get asked will be answered here. So there may be links and things to other places that board members, as well as the public, will be able to access with board questions. And then as we go into, I imagine this is going to take a little time going through all of the goals, but the focus on strategic questions, we're going to continue to practice that. But I think about the August board meeting, you'll have a monitoring report there. So this is a, this is a constant cycle for our research office, for the system that Mr. Moskovitz described in the analysis. And that report will come back to you for strategic questions on August sixth, the next report.
And the package in which the goal monitoring is provided to us, it's clear and concise. So I just wanted to give a big congratulatory applause to the team that put this together. As it's very clear, obviously, there's the ultimate conclusion that we're all looking for that is very clear that we're off track and we all want to be on track. But from a information standpoint, from a next step standpoint, from a student outcome-focused governance model standpoint, everything's here. And I'm appreciative of everybody's support and helping put this together.
Let me also just add on to your appreciation for the team. So Brian and Dr. Madrigal and Hameen Lalani from the Research and Student Outcomes Office participate in a cohort that is a student outcome-focused governance staff cohort in their meeting this week. And Brian, you're welcome to say a little bit more about it. But the reports were shared in the cohort for a learning opportunity for the entire cohort. And we're definitely, our team was recognized for their good work to take those four areas and the first, beyond the first attempt, but to come forward in a very transparent way to you all with their first three reports. They were recognized for the quality of the reports. And do you want to add anything to that?
Well, and actually, it might be helpful if we can look at interim goal 1B, just so I can bring an example forward. One of the things is, as we were thinking about putting together these reports in the agenda, one of the questions we asked ourselves was, should we, should we put these as three separate agenda items for each report? Or are they together as monitoring reports? And so one of the, I guess the questions I asked is, when we're, when we're talking about the monitoring reports, it will probably be helpful to take them one at a time because each of the, as we're talking, as we're asking strategic questions, the analysis and the next steps are slightly different for each. And so when we put, when we lump questions all together about we're off track and we need to do something different, it's, it's, it's been a little confusing for me to figure out which question are we, which interim are we talking about? But specifically to 1B, I'll give you some examples of some of the positive feedback we received. First of all, it's very clear when you look at 1B that we were on track last year. And we're clearly not off track, or we're clearly off track this year. But you also can look and see the, kind of the gap, if you will, between the trend line for the target and the actual. And so while we're off track, we're off track by a very small percentage, less than one percent. And so one of the conversations that we had in our cohort on Monday that we were engaged in was that there's a difference between off-track, being off-track with no progress, and far from target, and being off-track almost at the target and actually making growth. So when you look at the growth from twenty-four to twenty-five on this interim goal, we actually made three percent growth. We made three percent growth from twenty-three to twenty-four, three percent growth from twenty-four to twenty-five. And so while we are off track and we want to be, get back on track, then you can start looking, this gets to some of the strategic and tactical. You can start looking at the graph over on the right that shows the breakdown by grade. And you can look at that and see which grade level, I'll ask all of you, which grade, grade one, two, or three, we're looking at 1B now, is making the least gains over three years? Which of the three grades, grade one, two, or three, made the least growth over the three years?
Third grade.
Third grade. So grade one, up seven points over two years. Grade two, seven points. Grade three, one. And then this gets to your question just a little bit ago, Dr. Benitez, around the getting reading right training that we've deeply engaged with our K-2 teachers over the last two years has not yet, well, actually now it has, but prior to the summer had not yet gotten to our third through fifth grade teachers. This summer with Mr. Zaid's support, Dr. Myers Miller and her team's support, we have brought that really intensive reading training to our third through fifth grade teachers, and we'll engage with that with them this year. So it's not surprising to us that third grade is relatively flat up to this point because those teachers have not gotten the precision in the ways we teach foundational skills the way we're seeking to see that here. Influency is part of that. So again.
Brian, I was trying to ask the question so that you would have responded that to the question.
I was, I was, you asked a question this morning, and actually, all of you asked great strategic questions this morning, but they're not, yes, they're not coming out yet. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of get the conversation going. But that's an example. The reason I bring up this one, this was some of the feedback we got in one of the groups I was with on Monday in my cohort that were very clearly showing, we were on track last year. We're slightly off track now. You can look at the data on the right and you can make some observations about maybe where we're not making the same growth, which grade level is not. And then you can get into the analysis and read, and we can provide more context, that K-2 teachers did receive intensive training. Three, five have not yet, starting this summer. And so we would anticipate those third grade results to start to accelerate in the same way that grades one and two did, once the teachers had the more specific training. So just an example, I'm bringing together both the positive feedback we got from our colleagues, our peers in our cohort, and also how we can use, how we're using both the data itself and the analysis of that to make some decisions moving forward.
And again, going back to, because our goals and our interim goals were not developed nor designed, you know, there was no way for us to predict where we were going to go with this. But I do, I do have a kind of a very concrete question, and it has to do with the questions around subgroup population. So just so that I'm clear, for interim goal 1A, it's K through two. Interim goal 1B, it's grades one through three. Interim goal 2B, it's grades four and five. Included are students with disabilities, English learners, like it's all students, right? We're not, we're not pulling out any subgroup in any of the data that's being shared here.
And that's correct. And when you look at 1B, eighty percent of students in grades one, three will meet exceed. We will not get to eighty percent unless all students are showing significant growth. We will not get there by one subgroup getting to ninety and the rest, it will not happen. We will need all subgroups, all students to do well and to show growth if we're going to achieve that goal, that lofty goal that we've set.
Particularly those students that have, that we need accelerated growth from. Okay, thank you.
Well, I know we may not be asking our best strategic questions this evening, but I just want to remind people, we started this conversation this morning, and it is a new process. And so I'm just going to take this opportunity to acknowledge the quality of work here because we've gone from our own type of monitoring reports, kind of independent from the coaching that we've received, you know, with student outcome-focused governance, to a monitoring report that hits all the box. I mean, it checks all the boxes. When, when I read through it, it is designed to be user-friendly at a sixth grade level. One of the things that I appreciate is that there's, you know, a section on the bottom of each page saying, you know, key terms, and it has, it spells everything out and gives you a little bit of a description. So anybody, anybody coming into this report can, can understand it easily without having prior knowledge of anything else that's been done. And I appreciate that part. And everything is explained very nicely so that when we have our, you know, as board members, we have our information, what are we checking for? It's those four things we're checking for. We can see at a glance that that information is here. So I, you know, I want to thank the staff for putting together reports that are easy for us to read and understand, easy for our communities to read and understand. But we can practice our strategic questions. So would anybody like to give that more of a shot? Because I know we made little notes and we had our post-its and everything else.
For example, interim goal 1A starts on page ninety-five and goes to page one oh three, I think.
Yeah, so all of the materials are currently involved, are connected to the board agenda, but we will be posting them just as a separate PDF.
Then what I was going to say is, but that is also numbered one through nine. Then goal 1B is also numbered one through whatever it is. But, and is that available to the public somehow and where now?
Yeah, it's currently available, connected, there's a link on the board agenda. So actually, all three of them are linked there. The reason for the consecutive page numbering is because that, after you accept the monitoring reports, they will be separately posted as part of one of your board web pages, so they can be downloaded as individual reports.
I think it's important for the public to understand where they can find it.
Yeah.
And what it will, what the numbering is.
Okay, and we can build that in, that's, I'll take that as fair. We can build that into the next meeting as well.
So Mr. Moskovitz, I have a strategic question, if you will. So I'm going to reference interim goal 1A. And in looking at those numbers, it's something that you spoke about earlier where we may be off track, but we're still making progress. And so towards that end, what are the most effective strategies that have led to the increases?
That's a great strategic question, and this is going to be a perfect time for my colleagues to get ready to jump in with a question. So Mrs. Zaid and his team were instrumental in helping us to think about the analysis, what's working, next steps. Dr. Mars Miller, as she's gearing up in her time, she came with great expertise as a principal supervisor, now bringing her expertise into curriculum, working with that team and others around the table, frankly. Dr. Sosovolraman and her expertise around how we're supporting students with disabilities. So I will let you ask that question again, and I'm going to then open it up to the team to help answer your question.
Okay, so in reference to interim goal 1A, we see that we are off track, however, we are making progress. And so what strategies have led to the increases?
So I am happy to jump in on that question. As you can see clearly in some of the next steps that we have outlined, one critical strategy was the implementation of our instruction and intervention coordinators that are sometimes referred to as IICs. When you hear that they are working on tier-one instruction, it means that they are working on the quality of instruction in the classroom. That means they're partnering with teachers, they're planning with teachers. It means that they're modeling lessons with, with teachers. It means that they're giving a teacher's feedback. And we've really seen that observation, modeling, and feedback cycle be very effective. A few other strategies that we have seen, because what we're looking at is, of course, in our interim goal specifically, was K through two off-track. Yes, but that doesn't mean that there weren't individual schools that exceeded the, the, the goal or had stronger growth or extraordinary growth. And so one of the things that we've seen is two things. One, instructional leadership teams from different schools getting together. We really appreciate our research team and the way that they've supported teachers with how they look at their data because one of the ways that they get an opportunity to look at their data is not just for their school, but they get to look at similar schools. How did our school do with, with similar schools? And then they can connect with other schools. And we saw several schools get together, partner together, explore best practices together. Those were all, those schools being very strategic. And then I will give the last strategy that we saw successful. And that is, while we've built in data analysis into, I'll just say, our monitoring system, and we have what's called a collaborative data study where we pause to really look at the data, we also had grade levels get together on their own and go deeper into specific skills where students were doing well, which students need which specific skills. And that grade level, teacher-level data analysis that continued to happen is something that we also saw as not just the best practice, but something that, that led to some of our schools getting, I'll just say, good results. And so from where we are learning from each other and coming together and collaborating, and then having that coaching and that feedback, those are some of the strategic. and then having that coaching and that feedback, those are some of the strategic things that led to the progress that we've seen.
That's very interesting, because my next question was going to be about opportunities that our teachers have to share best practices, so it's wonderful to hear that that's in place, that's something that's already being utilized as a strategy, so I appreciate that. Okay, do we have any? Oh, Mr. Otto? Okay, so, without any objection, we'll go ahead and take the vote. It's been moved and seconded to accept the monitoring reports for this evening, so we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0 to accept this monitoring report. And again, I just want to thank everybody, because very thorough report and easy to understand, appreciated very much. Okay, let me just check. As I said, I'm getting used to this new agenda, I just want to make sure I'm not, ooh, I was almost going to skip something very important. So, next on the agenda, we have item number 15.2, our board bylaws 9030 and 9033, and so at this time, I'd like to welcome Mr. Strumfer, who joins us, who has been guiding us through this bylaw process, so good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Madam President, and Board Superintendent and Executive Staff. I'm here tonight to continue our process on board bylaws. We're going to look at two tonight, we're going to look at bylaws 9030 and 9033. First bylaw, 9030, the board member concerns regarding the performance of the superintendent. This bylaw addresses steps for board members to take when they become concerned that the superintendent may have either breached a term of their contract, violated a state or federal law, violated a policy or operating procedure, or failed to address a specific issue identified by the board within a reasonable amount of time. The steps are laid out in the bylaw in section 1A, B, and C. Close session procedures are in section 2. In the process following a board finding of a violation by the superintendent of any of the four concerns I just mentioned is in section 3. I also provided some comments in the published materials that hopefully answer some questions. I will turn it over for discussion, I'm happy to answer any questions or provide assistance as needed.
This process question, Madam President, are we taking these two together or one at a time?
I believe we'll take them one at a time. So, would somebody like to make a motion?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? And we are discussing board bylaw 9030? There any discussion?
We're only discussing 9030 right now?
Yes.
Okay, so, so on 9030, on C, the board president may, on their own accord, place an item on a regularly scheduled meeting agenda as a close session item to discuss concerns about the professional performance of the superintendent. Can someone clarify the process for placing an item on the board agenda if a board member requests it, but the board president does not support including it?
Well...
This is for closed session items only, right, for C?
That's correct, because it would be a personnel issue, it would be closed session.
And would that only be an item pertaining to the superintendent as it?
Yeah, as I mentioned in my note, board bylaw 9050 provides the board president duties when a request is made for an agenda item by a board member, so this would apply to that situation if one of you had a concern. Typically, the situation involving a complaint about a superintendent, I think, would be considered directly related to board guardrails, goals, or legal requirements, so it would be, based on 9015, the board president would need to put that on the agenda. She or he would not be able to say, "No, I don't want to do this." It would be part of, under 9015, it would be required of them to put it on the agenda.
Okay, so they would be required to put in the agenda, yes?
Yes, reading it with 9015, that's, that's what it would be.
Also, on this same board bylaw, we are, we're going to next discuss board bylaw 9033, which includes censuring board members, and I'm just wondering why we didn't include things like revoking privileges for the superintendent if, if, you know, if she's found, or whomever's in the, in the, in the, holding the, the office superintendent in violation of the, the bylaw, in violation of something that we've come up with.
Because she's, yeah, because she's an employee, and she's the chief officer of the school, the difference between a board member and your superintendent is a board member has certain duties to do with the board, however, other board members could do those duties if necessary, if needed, or with a superintendent, that's not quite so easy. So, the idea also is, as personnel, as she's an employee, you would take steps that are mentioned here, that are typical steps of personnel for, you know, for an HR situation, Dr. Anna's nodding her head, where with board members, it's a different situation.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments about bylaw 9030?
I'd like to move to approve the 9030 after vote.
So, you're, yeah, right, so you're calling for the vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then that passes 5-0? And next? Next, we have board bylaw 9033.
Yes, board bylaw 9033, concerns, board member concerns regarding other board member behavior. This bylaw addresses the steps for board members to take when they believe that another board member has violated either a bylaw, ethics, operating procedures, policy, or state or federal law. The four steps are expressly laid out in the bylaw. To be clear, step four is a last resort. Most all concerns of this nature in boards across the state are dealt with in steps 1 or step 2. Again, just like with the other bylaw that you voted on earlier, I have provided some edits and comments that hopefully answer any concerns you may have. I will turn it over to you for discussion, I'm happy to answer any questions.
We need a motion.
Move to approve.
Discussion? Dr. Bernitas.
So, Wayne, could you walk, there's a, we have three, three different versions of this. Could you walk us through your comments as they pertain to the specific either highlight or, you know, deletion in some cases, just so that we know in that final version that we have, sort of what your considerations and comments were based on our input.
Yeah, sure, and, and these changes are based on the board's comments, to me. So, step 1, I think, that's, yeah, step 1, originally, the language was, had violated board norms, there was a concern about that by at least one board member, if not more, and I felt that was a reasonable concern, you know, what is the definition of norms, and it may change, and it's very wobbly. So, I think bylaws is a better word to use there, as, you know, that's what you're required to follow. The brief change I made in the bullet under 1, I just changed the language, it, to me, it didn't make sense of it being scheduled, I made it requested by a concerned board member, the seven-day rule. In step 2, again, I changed the language, seven days of it being requested by the board president, which is what the requirement is in that situation. Step 3, I deleted, if the board member facing allegation does not participate in a conference in person via phone or via video within seven days of it being scheduled, the concerned board member may proceed to the next step. This language is unnecessary at this full board communication point. And, at the very end, the very last clause, under privileges, I added such, well, the language is all privileges, and then I tried to be a little clear with this, such as committee membership or a specific role on the board. That just gives some guidance to the board specifically as to what can be taken away, again, under a situation of last resort, which is under censure.
And so, in the case with regards to the privileges, thank you, Wayne, if the board member is the current vice president or president, and privileges are revoked, does, does that also mean privileges associated with the role of president or vice president?
It can, yes. It would be, again, depend on the board as a whole, what their decision would be, but it can, yes.
I, I do want to say, just the timing of putting this board bylaw on the agenda, I'm not surprised it was put in July. I had multiple times requested that we consider either putting on the agenda in June or in September. Obviously, in the summer, there's less audience here, and less likely to get any public comment and opposition of it. Section 9033 is designed to address concerns regarding the behavior of board members. While board members may not always exhibit exemplary behavior during meetings, censuring board members will essentially silence stakeholders, those are our parents, our educators, students, and community members. Censured board members will have a permanent change in status until lifted by the board via majority vote of the board. In official meetings, communication, and in written records orally, the district or district officials will change from board, records from board member to censured board member. And then all privileges as committee membership or a specific role on the board that has been extended to the censured board member are revoked and must remain revoked until the censure is lifted. Censured board members would be excluded from officer roles, committee roles, access to district athletics, access to district graduation, access to travel reimbursement, and access to any requests not covered by special public information request rights. In my humble opinion, I believe that this could potentially silence board members, especially those that may fear having that censured label on them, and, and I think, quite frankly, for me, I think I would proudly wear a censured board member shirt, a censured board member shirt, if it's, because I, you know, I'm going to represent the community, but I think in the future, that would potentially, you know, silence some of the, the board members. So, I, I think that this, this bylaw is pretty extreme, and, and then I wonder if there is a board member that is censured near graduation, again, not being able to attend those graduation ceremonies, go to the, go to the, go to event and represent their constituents, I find it pretty problematic.
Just for confirmation, really quickly, Wayne, you've been working in this field for 20-plus years, correct?
30-plus years.
30-plus years?
Yes.
Have you ever seen a set of bylaws without censorship?
No, and I would say in my career working with boards, which is about 25 years, I've written one censor.
Right.
And, and that was an extreme situation.
And, though I'm still early in my careers, where I too have, I understand the importance of having this tool available to boards, but it's rarely used, and obviously, there are a number of steps put in place to make sure that we never get to this point. And so, though I understand your concerns, Maria, I, I do want to make sure that you hear that this bylaw in particular is not towards Maria, is not towards anybody on this board, it is a tool that is created for the worst-case scenario.
I understand, but what I'm saying is that this could potentially silence board members who may want to bring something up and may fear being censured. Again, in my case, I think I would, you know, if, if, if I need to be censured because I am bringing something that I firmly believe in, then be it. But I think in, you know, other board members in the future, that could prevent them from really speaking up in a meeting, and that's just my humble opinion.
I just want to mention on step 1, it gives the specifics of, of how there could be a problem with a board member, and it's violation of bylaws, ethics, operational procedures, policy, or state and federal law. Definitely nothing that would be, you know, nothing about what you can say in a board meeting, unless you're violating the law when you're doing it.
But I think it also includes the bylaws, right? And, and I think it can be easy, as we've gone from seven bylaws to 40-plus, like, pages in bylaws, to, to be, to easily move in a different direction and be censured, but, I mean, we're going to vote on it, I just, you know, I do still question the, the timing of it, right in the time when people are vacationing, and, and I think it impacts them as well.
I would just like to address the part about timing, and there were no specific bylaws that were scheduled during the summer anticipating people being away on vacation. It was a matter of, we had a set of 18 bylaws, how can we divvy them up so that we're not overloading any one board meeting with the bylaws? And we wanted to take care of those bylaws so that we can move forward and, and move on to other work, like our, you know, monitoring calendar, learning how to be effective, you know, in, in monitoring the, the monitoring reports, that, that type of thing. So, for me, it was more of a matter of efficiency. Let's work on these bylaws and get them taken care of, so that we can move on from here. The bylaws are, are going to serve as guidelines for us, a resource for us. I know that once the complete set of bylaws is ready to go, I'm going to be referring to those myself to make sure that I'm doing what I should be doing in my role. So, with the, with the timing, I don't believe that it was intentional to do it at a time when we would have less community involvement. We had, you know, a fair number of community members who came and spoke, they used, you know, their, their time to speak about certain bylaws, and there's always email, that type of thing. So, I, I don't think it was anything intentional as far as preventing somebody from weighing in, or preventing us from, you know, checking with stakeholders about this. And when you get right down to it, it's, it's our board work, and we have a responsibility to take care of our board work. So, from, from that, I, you know, I, I kind of take offense to the inference that we've done this intentionally to avoid a more robust conversation, because that's not the intent at all. And then, to suggest that we would use this bylaw to censure somebody from speaking their mind is, I, I, is erroneous. I, I, I know that this is not the intent, it is not the spirit of the bylaw. This bylaw will be in place to protect the board and the district in extreme cases, and that does not include freedom of speech.
Well, I think we'll, we'll take it to a vote, but I just want to conclude by saying that I did bring up on multiple occasions during board meetings, I requested, understanding that, you know, there was an urgency to get through these board bylaws, that we can bring them up and vote on them, like, all of them, by June, by the middle of June, and if that was impossible, I asked, and I asked, this made this request on multiple occasions, if we could just then move it to September. But having said that, I think we should just take it to a vote.
I do have one comment. So, I think one of, one of my concerns is what recourse we would have as a board if we didn't pass some version of, of protection of the board. I'm thinking about the hostile political climate that school boards are operating in, I'm thinking about school districts next to us, that boards, board members have gone rogue. I'm thinking about school districts next to us that boards, board members have gone rogue and called special meetings without school board members, and have fired superintendents overnight, violating procedures, right? And so with, with me, it's more a concern of, look, we have federal agents out there right now in our communities kidnapping folks with masks, literally kidnapping our students' families, because we don't have, apparently, institutions and systems to protect communities when folks go rogue, when folks decide they're going to take the law into their own hands, when folks decide they're going to interpret bylaws and procedures according to their own self-interest. So I do worry that without some recourse as a board, recourse I'm talking about, violations, I'm very specific here, bylaws, operating procedures, policy, state or federal, that then it leaves us vulnerable. Not with, not with this group, I'm not worried about this group. I'm worried about, we have elections coming up next year, and anything can happen in these elections for these boards. We have elections for the majority of this board. So it leaves us susceptible, it leaves us vulnerable for all this work that we're doing around equity, for all this work that we're doing around our most vulnerable students, that without some kind of way to, to hold ourselves accountable to the bylaws that we passed, to the governance structures that we've set, in some cases that didn't exist before, that, that I'm concerned about these scenarios. And I'm not talking about far-fetched things, I'm talking about stuff that just happened, that is happening now, and that just happened in other districts next to us. So Wayne, if, if we don't have some recourse here, where does that leave us legally in terms of a board member just violating everything that we have in terms of policies, procedures, operations, and bylaws?
Yeah, it makes it very problematic without having anything in writing. I, I would think, and this might be something Mr. Will would, would comment on, you know, if, if it was something extreme, there might be a civil action that the board could take. But that then goes into court and then could take years, which is what we're seeing actually right now with the mass kidnappings, is it's going to go to court, but it could be, you know, forever before that decision is made. Whereas you have written rules here, you can take action much quicker.
I just have a question. Does L B U S D have a history of having, like problematic board members serving? Do we have a, do we have a history of, you know, that kind of situation where it, you know, where we're going to extremes of having, you know, board members, elected officials? I want to say that again, elected officials denied access to the, 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 the room here, to activities, to graduations, to, to facilities?
I can address that. I was a PTA leader, I don't remember what year it was, but we had a board member who was censured because he had been arrested for drunk driving. He actually fell asleep in an intersection, and he was censured. And his behavior was unlawful, there were other things that happened, but, but he, he, he was convicted of drunk driving, he got a DUI or whatever. But that did happen, I don't remember what year, but yes, in our history, yes, we've had to deal with an elected official who did not fulfill their duties and also broke the law. And so there needs to be protections in place, because ultimately, this particular board member did not represent his community. He was, I mean, there were, there were other problems about not, not attending certain meetings, certainly not, you know, reading the, the materials, that type of thing. But yes, it has happened, and I've seen it. Yes, but this, this codifies our procedure, this helps us out. As it was stated, there could be a civil lawsuit, but then you're talking about court, and you're talking about money using resources from the district. This protects us, this protects the district. So are we ready to take a vote on this?
Yes, I just want to say that my vote will reflect that I believe that this could potentially silence board members, especially those who may fear being labeled with censured.
Mr. Otto.
Sure, thanks. You know, I, I, I think that the failure to pass something like this, maybe not exactly this, but something like this, is a violation of what is the premise of how boards work. And that is, you start off with trust, you start off with, you're doing it together. No one board member has the authority to, to take a position, it's all collectively done. And if you don't have the kinds of rules that we're talking about, it invites division. And we don't have a policy that says, well, maybe we do, but you, we need to, to emphasize the importance of trust, collegiality, working together. And if people, and, and Wayne gave an example that in 30 years of doing this, he's seen one censured. I, I, I don't know that we can, you know, say how much there is, but it's, something like that is very, very rare. And if, unless we have things like what we're trying to do tonight with this particular bylaw in place, what we're doing is inviting the discouragement of trust, of collegiality, of working together as a board collectively. And we would be doing it against some fanciful idea that, that no, the board's going to wind up being something that it's never been. Or there may be an individual that did something wrong. But I, 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 I looked at this carefully, talked about it with other people. I've been on many, many other boards where there have been bylaws in place. And, and my gut feeling is that without bylaws like this, you're inviting the exact kind of problems that, that are being alluded to that, that, that don't seem to occur. And so I, I'm, I'm in support of this and expect during, during my tenure on this board never to have to, to, to say, we've got to do something about this, we've got to censor somebody, unless there's something that's so extraordinary that, that we can't help but do it. And we would do it because of the need to, for the integrity of the board, for the integrity of the process, because all we are is, is elected public officials trying to do something together to educate the students in this community. That's why I support it.
Thank you. Then I believe we're ready for the vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
For me, it's a no.
So that passes four in favor, one opposed. Thank you, everyone. Let me get back to the agenda and find my way. I know I have, ah, yes, okay. So, and thank you, Mr. Strumfer. So we're at item 15.3, student outcome focus governance implementation. Our implementation timeline, group meets weekly. And there are different things I want to report about tonight. So this morning, we conducted our quarterly evaluation. And the first two quarterly evaluations we conducted, we didn't earn any points. But this morning, when we... Oh, well, we have a, we have a tool that is six pages long. Well, it, it covers six different domains, monitoring and accountability, unity and trust, that type of thing. And when we conducted the self-evaluation this morning, we earned 32 points. And so we've gone from no points to 32 points. It's definitely progress, and a lot of work, and thank you, staff, and our superintendent, a, a lot of work went into earning these 32 points for, ultimately, for our students. So I wanted to report on that. And then something that we didn't get to because we ran out of time was next steps for the next evaluation. And so I'm going to cover just a few of these. If there's something else to add, I invite you to jump in. So on the first domain for vision and goals, I believe our next steps could be helping Member Miller with the community engagement planning. I know that you're working on a script for, for us. And then board members, we need to provide three locations once we get to the point of planning our, our district engagement meetings.
And I want to be clear about the types of suggested sites, right, or locations, because I think that there's the natural connection to assume that it needs to be school sites, and that's not necessarily the case. Obviously, our five different parts of town have five different cultures, five different points of activation, events that occur during the year. And so finding opportunities within our districts where we will get potentially the best turnout or the best connection to students or community members, those are the times and/or places and/or locations that I'm asking you all to consider as we would like to host these events with the most robust and best opportunity to connect with our constituents.
Thank you for that, because I was thinking high schools, to tell you the truth. That's what I was thinking. But now I will, I will be considering other, other venues. Okay. And then next, on the values and guardrails domain, the board needs to create its own guardrails. So that would be a next step. Also, theories of action. So I believe, I believe both of these items will require training with our coach. So we'll be speaking to Greg very soon to set something up about that. On the monitoring and accountability domain, we need to work on a superintendent evaluation that's based more on goals and guardrails, also requiring a training, and a, an agenda review. And that will take one of us to be meeting with Greg. It wouldn't be a training with the complete board, but one of us to meet with Greg about that. And then also, we need to learn how to rate our monitoring sessions. So as we've been practicing today, we will continue to work on asking strategic questions and, and getting to the point where we are effective and highly effective in monitoring our monitoring reports. And then on the communication and collaboration domain, we need a training on policy review, on the unity and trust domain, resume work on the policy review process. So those two would be handled together. And then on the continuous improvement domain, have the status of goals, guardrails, and interims on public display, and it would be in this room. So we need to figure out logistically how we want to do that. We are fortunate enough to have creative minds and a wonderful graphics department and talented people to come up with some way of displaying that. And our, our coaching on that is to think of it like a scoreboard. So maybe we can have fun with it, I'm not sure. And then eventually, but not right away, we need to think about having a training for prospective board candidates, because as you mentioned earlier, Dr. Benitez, that, we need to be thinking about that. There will be elections very soon, and so we need to make preparations. Another thing that we discussed this morning with the self-evaluation tool was tracking our time. And so for this past quarter, Dr. Benitez has volunteered to track time for the April, May, and June meetings. But now we need another volunteer to track time for the July, August, and September meetings. And you would not be doing that alone, that would be with our coach and maybe with a little mentorship from Dr. Benitez, since he's already been doing it for a quarter. So do we have any volunteers? Mr. Miller, your light's going on, are you volunteering? Thank you so much. So let, I'm sorry, what?
I think the, Doug's also pretty excited.
I, I, in order to block, I volunteer.
So, so Mr. Otto, are you volunteering?
Yes.
You are? This is fabulous, thank you very much. So, Mr. Otto, we'll be doing our time tracking for this meeting today, both of meetings today, August and September. And then lastly, because our, our coach is not here, I, I did want to mention that our, our coach is more than willing to do a two-day training for us. And in fact, we are looking at some dates in October, I believe it is. And so board members, think about either a Friday, Saturday, or Saturday, Sunday timeframe for a two-day training. And Dr. Baker, did you want to...
I was just going to say that I committed from our implementation team meeting to polling all of you in the next couple of weeks on those dates, kind of scoured the master schedule, the master calendar, and looked at like in-between board meeting dates. So either a secretary or I will be reaching out to you, or in our one-on-ones, I may ask you about your preference. And then that would be a training for team as well as the board. And invitation to other districts, so they have a couple other California districts that would like to participate. And so if we hosted, we could do it locally and then include the other districts that have enquired with the Council of Great City Schools.
And I have to say, it's very enlightening to work with people from other districts. Very interesting. So I've gone over some next steps, these aren't steps that are going to be taken right away, but did anybody have anything to add, anything they'd like to...
Also wanted to highlight, and our communications team has it up on the screen, this is again, this is a reminder that the implementation timeline is on the website. It's linked to the board's webpage. So any member of the public that wants to see the sequencing that's going on, the things that you're talking about and that have been referenced, this timeline is live. It's updated by our coach, and then when it's updated, it, it is updated live.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
I'll wait to my report.
That sounded ominous. Let's see. Okay, so I think that's all I had under student outcome focus governance for tonight. Next on the agenda, we have item 15.4, the Williams Uniform Complaint Procedures.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes 5-0. That was a real easy one, everybody, because there was nothing reported. So nothing reported, nothing to fix. Yeah. Oh, and now we are at a report of board members. So Mr. Miller, wait no, wait no longer. So, Mr. Miller, wait no longer.
So, really quickly, just a couple of things I wanted to bring up. One of the things that I have often wanted or requested or shared with our parents is just finding ways to keep our young people active during the summers. We obviously know some of the pitfalls that can happen when they're inactive, so making sure that we can keep them involved in city activities, summer school, sports. Obviously, I just am a big, big supporter of just any form of activity. Some of the activities that are going on right now are... And one that I highly support is the Ron Palmer Basketball Camp. It's the twentieth annual Ron Palmer Basketball Camp, hosted by Errol Parker and his team. You can sign up by going to smartballsummercamp.com. The camp will be hosted on August fourth to the seventh. So, if you are a young man, you have to be under the age of fourteen, but have an interest in sports. They'll be doing multiple sports, not just basketball. Please visit the website, as it is a great opportunity to get your kids involved. Another important activity that's occurring is actually within our district, and it's through San Kofa Parent Village, is the Power of Expression Learning Series. That is from July twenty-ninth to the thirty-first. Once again, you can easily just visit our website to learn more about those activities. But once again, it's about staying involved. One of my biggest programs that I support is Freedom School. Freedom School is going on right now. I am quickly going to be signed up as a guest reader, which is one of my favorite things to be a part of. I've been a part of Freedom School for twenty-plus years now. Funny enough, that is one of the first jobs that was introduced to me by my wife. But all things considered, it's a great, great program. And so, once again, a big congratulations to the Success and Challenges Group for... This is their twentieth year in hosting Freedom School Long Beach. For those that don't know, Freedom School is actually a federal program that is hosted throughout the country. But we have, we are fortunate enough to have our own Freedom School program right here in Long Beach. The last thing that I wanted to talk to was kind of a quick synopsis or input on today's student outcome-focused governance. Obviously, we spent some time, not only looking at our monitoring calendar, but we've also spent some time really analyzing next steps for our young people to make sure that we, as a system, are operating at our max efficiency to get the best outcomes for our young people. And I know that there is an eagerness that has just been more of a national culture when it comes to expectations and change. Like, something's always gotta change. Something's always gotta be moving. You know, we come from a microwave society to a certain extent that will be two to three weeks into something, and we expect massive results. And this is not what this is. When we're talking about our student outcome-focused governance efforts, this is a culture reset for the district. And so, as we're continuing to work through this, I want, I'm hoping that those that are listening understand that we're slow-cooking this thing, so it's marinated nice and tasty, you know? This is not gonna be microwave.
It's dinner time, so be careful with this metaphor thing.
Right. So, the expectation that the results will be instant, the expectation that our bylaws can be approved in a day, the expectation that our third graders will be reading at max proficiency after one year is not what this is. This is resetting a culture as a district and improving it so that it is max, that it's max efficiency as a whole. So, as we continue to go through this work, I just want to continue to extend my appreciation for the work that has been done thus far, while also asking for continued grace from our young people that are in the system, our parents who are experiencing the system and watching their child go through it, and the folks that are implementing some of the changes that have been a trickle-down from the board that have been... That's the end of my report.
Dr. Benitez?
Thank you, Madam President. So, just want to restate that we've made several references today at this meeting about our morning board workshop. If you get a chance, check it out. We covered self-evaluation with governance. We got a preliminary first draft of a social media and cellphone policy. We covered facilities. We got a facilities update. And then, we also got a glimpse of what our goal monitoring report was gonna look like. So, if you're interested and you want to take a deeper dive into items that, quite frankly, we need to set these special meetings, because just with the goal monitoring, it was ninety minutes with that. So, it just give you the breadth of the scope of what my colleagues have been talking and referencing about today. But also, you can watch at your leisure, right, to get a better sense of any of those four areas. I also was thinking, I heard several times throughout the day today, the question, I'm joking here, Dr. Baker, is it summer yet? It's summer, but at the same time, next month, we're back in school again. And I've seen, you know, in various places throughout our district, that there are a lot of nonprofits, community organizations, not just doing services and programming and supporting our communities, but they're already getting geared up for back-to-school events, right? So, I've seen already back-to-school supply giveaways, uniform giveaway. So, please reach out to one of our partners, to CommunityOrg, to support the organization, as a part of that, to support our communities as we get geared up for another school year next month. So, thank you to the community organizations that are working year-round in support of our students and families. I'll end on a bit of a more somber note here in a reminder, and again, a continuous call-in to our communities around the precarious nature of our public education funding, and specifically, of the federal funds that we receive. So that when we talk about this administration's federal cuts, when we talk about this administration's policies, not just education policies, but policies that impact our ability to provide the highest quality education, when we talk about the current dismantling of our Department of Education, that has real, concrete consequences. And in our case, because of the high percentage of underserved students that we serve, disproportionate negative impacts for our districts. Real, concrete negative impacts. So, specifically, and I know, Dr. Baker, you're gonna talk a little bit about this, but when we talk about Title II, Title III, these are our English learners, folks. Title IV, it's ten million dollars, literally overnight, that we're losing just from that funding stream. And there's corollary negative impacts. This district, nor any district, should be put in a situation where we're gonna have to figure out, what do we do with our Head Start program? What do we do with nutrition services? Those free and reduced meals that our students rely on? And in some cases, it's the only meals that some of our students will have all day. Those are the real consequences of the federal administration that we have with us today, concrete, on the ground. So, again, you haven't participated civically. If you haven't reached out to your elected, if you haven't mobilized, participated in action. We have sixty-four thousand students that are negatively being impacted right now, as we speak, even if we're in summer, by these horrendous policies. And I'm just talking about the funding part of it. So, call in, call out, that we cannot handle this as a district without our communities mobilizing around, right now, our underserved students and most impacted communities. But all of our students suffer, all of our families suffer, with any cut to our public education funding. So, I know our district will move forward and push forward, but that's not an easy task. And it's not something that our public system was built to do with limited, and in these cases, reduced, funds and lack of federal support for our most vulnerable students, our most underserved students. So, again, if it's not said here, where else are we gonna call in our communities? All right? We talked about budgets last month. Well, here we are. Immediate ten-million-dollar cut to our budget. That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. It's tough to hear, and I'm sure it was tough to say, but it needed to be said. So, thank you.
Is very brief. I've been, I've had the same things on my mind about funding for the district and what's going on. And I haven't wanted to raise the questions because it seems to me that things are still up in the air. And one of the consequences of raising these flags can be to bring the raft down of people that are making decisions about what's gonna happen. And yet, I think, and compliments to Dr. Benitez, you need to acknowledge that these are issues that we're facing. I had a conversation earlier with somebody about this, and he said, "Well, it's gonna come up in the budget real soon. We're gonna have to deal with this, because we're gonna have to revisit the budget that we just spent a lot of time on." And we don't know what the details of that are, and we're not gonna know until Washington tells us what those details are, or maybe even Sacramento as well. But there's a profound impact and adjustment if the things that they're talking about in Washington, in particular, and to a lesser extent, in Sacramento, come to pass. And yet, we see that there's retaliation mentality that's going on if you question the decisions that are being made. And so, I'm a little trepidatious about putting us in a worse position by taking or making strong statements about things. But let's see what happens going forward. On a lighter note, but I want to emphasize also our workshop this morning about cellphones, cyberbullying, and social media safety. I am in the middle of this right now because I have seven and eight-year-old granddaughters staying with me. And what I say every morning about ten times is, "Will you get off that..."
Please don't use that word. Please, please. No.
Look, you're thinking of the adjective. I'm not gonna say the adjective. "Will you get off that..." Screen. "Get off the screen." And they go, huh? What? And it's a big deal. And I'm watching that, I'm living through it. I see how important it is. And I think we've done exceptional, exceptional work as a district on the issue of phones. And I've said this to Tiffany and Jill. I'm very impressed with the way that this district has handled these issues of phones, cyberbullying, and student, and social media's safety, because we didn't just run into it and just say, "We gotta get this done." We've been very thoughtful. We have recognized that the most important part of this is the education and bringing people along and getting people to agree to this, because it's the right thing to do. And I think that what we're doing is extraordinarily thoughtful, and I believe will be a very successful approach to things, to these particular topics. And they're big topics going forward, because if you don't handle them well, I think that the consequences are to be very... I'm worried about the consequences if you don't do this well. So, I do think that it is summertime, although with these same seven and eight-year-olds, I spent, you know, an hour at Target yesterday buying outfits. And it reminded me that school's just around the corner and that these things have to be taken into consideration. And the last thing that I want to say, I think, is that I'm worried about the tone of things that go on sometimes here. I don't think that... I mean, I just have this feeling that we're worried about things that are not the things that we should be worried about. That what we should be worrying about is how this board can become, can come together, how this board can address the issues and not worry about things that are so unlikely to happen that it's a distraction from the real issues that we need to be focused on. And that's my commitment. My commitment is to try and do things that will positively impact our students. And in order to do that, we have to do that together as a board. I'm gonna double down the importance of that and try and make sure that the board works together in order to accomplish those things, because we hardly have enough time and money to do the things that we need to do without worrying about things that are so unlikely to happen that they're just not even worth talking about.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez?
Yes, I'll be brief. So, I am deeply concerned with some of the board bylaws we have adopted. Tonight, the board adopted a controversial bylaw, in my opinion, Board Bylaw Ninety Thirty-three. We did so, as I said earlier, in the summer and when it's likely that we'll have community members attending our meeting and providing some feedback. My vote tonight reflected what I have been firmly, what I've firmly stated in the past, that my vote would always keep in mind the students, the educators, the parents, and the community members. I said that my votes would always reflect, is it good for all of them? And if it was, then you would see that will reflect it. And if I didn't feel that what we were doing wasn't in the best interests of everyone, of those groups, then that would also be reflected in my vote. But I will also, but I will leave my comment on the board bylaws for another day. Today, I just want to thank all those who record our board meetings every time we meet, those who translate them, and those who keep us safe. Thank you, safety officers, interpreters, and the communications department for all of your work. Your work is invaluable. You are appreciated, and your work isn't overlooked. I appreciate those of you that are here from very early on, you know, doing exactly what I've just said. And sometimes, we're here very late. And I think of you every time we're in meetings very late, and we've had a workshop and meeting. So, thank you. Thank you for all that you do. You are very greatly appreciated.
Thank you. So, continuing on with the gratitude, thank you to Chris Sitson and Lee Underwood, our Milliken teacher, who presented on the cellphone policy and cyberbullying. And thank you to our staff for helping us to go over the monitoring report and how to be more effective question designers or whatever. Also, happy birthday, Dr. Myers-Miller. I know you're not happy about that either, but happy birthday. And then, also, with our facilities, Mr. Miranda and Tracy Nishihara. Unfortunately, they had to give us a condensed version of their report on facilities because we went over on time. But thank you very much. They were prepared, and they had anticipated. They were prepared, and, and they had anticipated that happening. They're very smart. I just want to, um, report on one event that I did attend, um, this summer, and it was the Cal State Long Beach, uh, Long Beach Unified School District Math Collaborative. I know you forgot that, Mr. Miller, right? And, um, that was the Rite of Passage STEM Camp Closing Ceremony. The title could not have been longer. I'm sure they tried. But, um, it was 30 scholars from Jordan, and it was a celebration with, um, math collaborative alums. Uh, there were, uh, our staff members from, um, LBUSD staff members and counselors from, um, Cal State Long Beach. There were, um, classroom presentations and projects. The focus was on STEM, some math science, that type of thing. Um, and I, and I just want to say the, um, I feel like the effort here is so much more than the math collaborative. I feel like the effort here is actually saving lives because when you consider these fine young men who may be going down a wrong path, and then somebody reaches out a hand and says, "I have a way to help you. I have, I, I have this, um, this support system for you, and I can show you another way." That's what's happening. I know that for the young men who have been through the program, they come back and speak to the young men who are currently in the program, and they mentor them. And it's, it's no less than these lives being saved. Um, what I heard from, um, from one of the young men was, you know, "Make sure you have a plan. Manifest your future." It may not seem like a lot to, to some of us, to encourage somebody to make a plan for their future, but I think for a lot of people, that makes a difference. Just those words, "You need to make a plan." You're giving that person hope for the future, and you're letting them know the future will be better with a plan. It'll be better if you dream big, and it'll be better when you have these people to walk alongside you. And what I heard from another young man was, um, "What you're gifted at is what you're best at with the least amount of effort." I thought that was a really good quote, but also, um, from our very own Doris Robinson, um, she said, "We can't give up on these kids." And it takes, it takes a huge effort. It takes so many people to, to watch out for our kids, to give them a way forward. And I just have to say, watching these young men walk into the room the way they did, shoulders back, heads held high, I know they're making a plan for their future. And so I want to thank everybody involved for making that possible, so much more than math. Um, and that ends my report. Dr. Baker?
Thank you. And actually, among you, you covered the items that I was going to cover, including the budget item, Dr. Benitez, the way you spoke to it. There will be more information about that, but I think letting our community know that we are, um, taking in all that information, do what we, doing what we can to sift through it. But it is a dark day in terms of what is happening relative to public school systems across the nation, including ours. So thank you for amplifying that, and thank you for the acknowledgement of staff who work behind the scenes, the board workshop staff. It was a great, great day spent with all of you, and I appreciate your, your commitment to public education.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. So that concludes the business of tonight's meeting. Thank you all for joining us. I know it's been a long day. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is August 6th, so without any objection, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.